I'll go ahead and open the meeting and welcome everybody to the April 22, 2021. Meeting of the Tompkins County Council of Governments. Happy Earth Day. So yeah, very nice day even with the snow. And so I'll call the meeting to order and ask for any additions or deletions. People would like to make.
I didn't know if the question about the whole cannabis law made it onto the agenda or not, but I'd certainly like to talk about that.
Okay. And I think everyone is aware, we were, you know, notified yesterday that Jason Molino is taken a job in Livingston County and will be stepping down shortly. So I wanted to acknowledge Jason and I know many of you are on the supervisor's call this morning and we all really appreciate what Jason's done here. And so just wanted to acknowledge that. And I'll add a brief report from the Transit Services Committee as well.
Mark, I actually, I actually have a question related to Jason's transition to float to this group later, or whenever you think it's appropriate.
Sure. Okay. Thanks.
I had a question also. I'm Caitlin Olson. I'm the Deputy Supervisor of Ulysses. Nancy can't be on the call today.
Okay.
But she had a, an issue that we've been discussing at the town level and wanted me to raise it with TCOG, which is that the, the state existing law concerning video conferencing doesn't really allow for Zoom, a Zoom world, without advertising the location of people who aren't attending the meeting and inviting the public to join. And so she wanted to raise that to, to talk about, or for the, for us to consider whether or not we should be petitioning the State Assembly to alter that, given that the new technology allows for a much wider increase of participation publicly. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. I think that's important. Thank you. Great. And, and so Rorden, I'll put something on the, add something to the agenda for for this item you mentioned for regarding Jason's stepping down. So. All right. With that, I'll move on and offer a motion for approval of the February 25 minutes.
So moved.
Great. Was that Betty?
Yes, it was.
Thanks, Betty.
A second.
Second by Joel. Any comments, feedback, discussion?
One comment, which is that, I mean, there are a few minor, you know, errors in the minutes. It'd be nice to be able to correct them ahead of time. So we don't, I don't think it's worth us spending time here fussing with them, but it'd be nice to be able to suggest edits before.
Sure. I mean, I, the way I've handled that is just emailed Katrina if it's a typo or something like that. That's really not, not that substantive. Is that the kind of thing you mean, Joel, or?
Yes, it is. Maybe that would work. How do we know that, you know, whatever suggestions get incorporated?
Joel, she would let you know, I think, just by email. But I don't know if, if. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I would suggest that if there are any minor edits, that they be submitted and we would make the corrections before they're posted.
Great. Thanks, Kathy.
Sure.
Yeah. Great. So so with that, you know, we should, we should just submit them to Kathy and/or Katrina.
You know, just to note that we won't get them until, you know, three days before the meeting. So there's not a whole lot of time to go back and forth. When do they get posted into, and where do they, where do they get posted to?
They're posted following approval and they're available on our meeting portal.
Okay. So they don't really get posted until after we deal with it anyway.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Great. So, so what you're saying Kathy is, is if, if we make the changes at the meeting or by email in advance, those both work, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, great. I'll go ahead and call for all in favor of approval.
Hi.
Opposed? Great. Thank you. Do we have a report from county administration?
There's not a report necessarily from county administration. Hi, everyone. I'm Leslyn and echoing Mark's happy Earth Day. Thank you, Mark. You already acknowledged that our county administrator is stepping down from his position as of the end of May. And so the county will be, county legislature will be engaging in conversation relatively soon on next steps. Filling the position and what do we do going forward? So just want to acknowledge that and thank you for acknowledging Jason and the work that he's done in Tompkins County. That's it.
Great. Thank you, Leslyn. Yeah. He will be dearly missed, that's for sure. So. The all right. We'll move on to reports and I see that is Darby here? Yes. Hi Darby. Great. So we'll have Darby reporting on the draft Harmful Algal Bloom Strategy. Take it away, Darby.
Great. Thanks, everyone. I'm glad to be here. I'm gonna work on sharing my screen and can I get some head nodding if everybody can see this? Okay, great. Thanks. Let me do all my arranging. I first want to make some announcements about some items going on in the Department of Planning and Sustainability. I think the last couple of years, David West was running a program for the municipal housing affordability and supportive infrastructure grant program, and that is open again. And so that's for municipalities, if you want to apply for CDBG money or other housing type projects that you need a little assistance. So it's an opportunity to get some, some consultant help with the, with the funding. And it's a pretty small budget this year. It's only a total of $15,000. That's one five. And you can request up to $10,000. So if you're interested in that, we just have it as a first come, first served on our website. You can take a look at that if you want to know more. I know a little bit about it because I'm running it while we're down a couple of staff members. So just let me know if you have questions. The second item is that some of you might be aware that the draft total maximum daily load for phosphorus for Kewa Lake came out a couple of weeks ago, and that's drafted by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. And unfortunately, they have a 45 day comment period. So it's not a lot of time and that ends in, in late May. So we are asking people to put in requests for extensions and Liz Thomas, who I see is here today, is the Chair of the Kewa Lake Watershed Intermunicipal Organization. And so you can connect with her on comments submitting if you're interested. There are a couple, many groups submitting comments. And so if you want to know more between me and Liz, we could provide some answers for that. And then two other opportunities that revolve around stream buffers and stream restoration are municipal things, places where we want to engage municipalities. So the one is a discussion that we want to hold, me and Joan Jerkow, which have been talking about this to talk about stream buffer regulation. So more to come on that. It's just developing. It's an idea that came out of Joan's request from last fall of what municipalities are interested in learning more about. And I think stream buffer regulations came up as one of those items. And then the second municipal training on stream buffers is a project that is being put together by the Water Resources Council. And this is, this launch is from the November 2019 stream buffer program that we held. And, and the idea this time is that we would be doing some onsite visits. So a couple of places in Lansing that we have in mind that can, we can show people what it means to do a stream restoration project and some stormwater attendees. And so I have my email address there at the bottom. Just d kyle at Tompkins dash C O dot org. If you want to reach out to me on any of those, but most of them you'll hear more about coming soon. But today I came to talk about what we've been putting together for a Tompkins County Harmful Algal Bloom Strategy. And we've been really, the last few years, I think, have been a bit of a light bulb coming on for people like what harmful algal blooms are. We're seeing more and more in not just Kewa Lake and Owasco Lake, but across New York State and the country. And, and they're not new. I mean, harmful algal blooms are cyanobacteria that have been on the earth for billions of years. But it's really when there's a lot of them that they become a problem and that some of them can release toxins. And that's when they become a health risk for everyone. So what we did was there's some, there's information out there and we were just trying to figure out like, what, what are we, what are we, Tompkins County municipalities? How are we going to handle this? So what we, we have a pretty short draft. It's an eight page document. We wanted to keep it pretty tight and focus really on the action. So here's the, the outline of what's in our HAB strategy. And it really came out of an effort that the state started back in 2018. They released 12 harmful algal bloom action plans for, sorry, for 12 different lakes across New York State. So we in Tompkins County, both the Owasco Lake Plan and the Kewa Lake Action Plan were, were really exciting that they were released and a number of us worked on putting those ideas together. But we, when they came out, it was, it was lacking in some specificity that we felt like we needed as, as land managers and municipalities to really, to know what to do with this plan. They're just, there's a lot of really great backup ground information, which is why we do not include that in our HAB strategy. But in terms of where to target different best management practices, it was a little unclear. So the idea of our strategy is to take the state plan and make it more specific for us. And we also use the Tompkins County's Water Conservation District every five years does update of their agricultural and environmental management strategic plan. So we use that informing this document. And then there are just a number of other plans and activities that are pending. And we know that TMDL is out for draft, but it's not released yet as a final document. And the same thing with the Owasco Lake Watershows and Regulations. So we're waiting on a number of other documents that will also inform what we do and how we move forward with our own HAB strategy. And the dog just decided to come shake right beside me. So the, the state action plans do a lot of research on, you know, why, why are we seeing HABs now? And you know, what, what's going on in different lakes? So they did a study of over 160 lakes. And the four main triggers that they found, the forming conditions that are correlated with the blooms of harm, of the cyanobacteria are two things we really cannot control. And those are the maximum fetch length and the direction of the fetch. And so I included this little diagram on here because it's a word we hear. We don't always remember what it means. But the fetch is the, the longest length and wind direction on a water body. So because Kewa Lake runs, we'll just call it north, south. And so that's the longest direction that the wind can blow. And, and once you know that the wind often blows out of the north, then that, those are conditions that contribute to the formation of HABs. And then the third one that they found was the presence of zebra and quagga mussels. And so we think all very familiar with those invasive species and know that trying to eradicate them at this moment is, is not very feasible. I've talked to a couple of different people about that and it's, it's something to strive for, but not something that in a three-year plan, we're going to include as one of our own strategies for Tompkins County. But the fourth item that is force condition that triggers HABs is the phosphorus levels in a water body. And so we've been hearing about this with both the TMDL and, and just kind of our history of water quality concerns in Kewa Lake. So we're focusing on our actions on phosphorus loading because it's something that we can, we can do something about that. So what do we know about the phosphorus coming into Kewa Lake? So 8% is coming from our non-point sources. So that's our wastewater treatment facilities, like source cooling gets added into there. So this is for all of Kewa Lake. So those are our point sources that have Spreedy's permits. And as the TMDL, TMDL goes into, they have permit conditions that they are, will be required to meet. But then 92%, so this huge majority of the phosphorus is from non-point sources. And it breaks down to being a majority of that being in agriculture. So 80% of the non-point sources are, are tied to agriculture. And then smaller amounts from septic systems, just natural runoff and then developed areas as well. So that's, you know, just kind of a, the action plans from the state have a lot more details of those. So, but how do we track what's going on both with HABs and our water quality? We've been lucky to have not only the state has a, the DEC Department of Environmental Conservation has their own reporting page, but that locally, the, a partnership of Community Science Institute, the Kewa Lake Watershed Network and, and to discover Kewa Lake have been working on a HABs Harriers Program. And so they train volunteers and they've covered over 50% of the, the lake to weekly go out and look to see if there are HABs. Or if they see them at a different time, then they can, they can report on this, this page. So this is just a snapshot of, of what their reporting page looks like. And so that's been a really great resource locally. And then if, I mean, if you're a lake user in any way, you can kind of be tracking it. And the nice thing is the southern end has not been as greatly affected, especially by the high toxin levels as the northern end of, end of the lake. But that's something that we need to be continuing to be tracking this. So it's really great that municipalities and the county have put into funding to support that monitoring. But then we also need to know what is going into the lake from our streams and then what's, you know, how's the cycling going within the, within the lake? So the state, New York State has several different programs. I'll just say that they're not very sufficient to, to capture what all is going on. But there's the CE SLAP, which stands for Citizen Statewide Lake Assessment Program. And then they also have RIBS, which is every five year rotating intensive, I think, basin survey. So that's a once every five year sampling program. And then they have the annual one. But only the state right now only supports two sites in Kewa Lake. So that's, that's another story for another time. And then we also have the sampling that the Community Science Institute does for streams and lakes, you know, in Kewa Lake, and then many of the streams that flow into the lake. And the Finger Lakes Institute does a lot of monitoring on Kewa Lake and Owasco Lake. So that's a monitoring section. And then we move into, so that's very simply described in a couple of pages of this document. And then we get into the action, the actions within it. And we focus in four different areas. The first is agriculture. And as many of you know, our Soil and Water Conservation District staff are completely overworked and doing a wonderful job with the resources that they have. So we, we didn't want to ask a lot of them in this, but we really wanted to promote what they're doing and also recognize farmers and what they are doing. And how do you, the one thing that they, the, the farmers and the practitioners all say is that it's very much word of mouth for adopting different projects and programs and best management practices. And so, you know, we, we have some ideas behind creating some materials that can be shared to promote those. And then even just thanking farmers for what they do. And so we, we have some ideas on, on how to get that recognition going across the county and then across the watersheds. Another thing that we hear from Soil and Water, just staffing levels is an issue, but then just having the funding when they're trying to establish best management practices. So the, the farmer often has to front the money for a practice and then get reimbursed once the, once they've shown that they've done the work. And so sometimes it's helpful to have a pot of money and the, the county does supply some money for that. But I think they, Soil and Water could do more projects if they had more funding. And so anyway, promoting programs and modernizing their system, there's, there's a lot to be done with agriculture that this doesn't really say prevent phosphorus, but one, one best management practice at a time is what we need to, to accomplish that phosphorus loading issue. And then the next, so the next action area is in ditch management. And I don't know how many of you guys caught Rebecca Schneider's presentation last week with the Finger Lakes Land Trust, but I think she does a really great job recognizing the work that highway departments do for us and our water quality. And I think she's done a lot to have training out in the, in the field and across the state. I was talking to someone from Madison County yesterday and she, and she said, oh my gosh, our highway department just loves Rebecca and they will, they cheer her on every time she comes and does a, does a presentation. So it's really great to have her as a resource and also Cornell Local Roads. So the ideas, the actions around the ditch management is what are some ditch management best practices, policies that municipalities can adopt? So you might be hearing more from us in the coming year or so on that topic. Just reminding highway departments every year that the, the Soil and Water Conservation District does have a hydro seeding program and they can provide assistance and, and resources for that. And then we have a couple of ideas on trainings, both with more on the engineering side and how do you engineer the culvert in a ditch to incorporate cross veins and other stabilization methods. Actually just drove down Hile School Road yesterday and saw the work that the, I guess the, I don't know, was it the town or the county did in a town of Dryden, which has some check dams along the way, which looks anxious to see how that turns out. And then the yes, letter I is focused in on a pilot project in a municipality looking at steep slopes. Where we think we're going to work with Ulysses, we're still working out the details on that. But we have, I don't know if many of you have worked with Angel Henneke from the Tompkins County Soil and Water Conservation District, but she's been doing a ditch inventory for a number of years. And so we have this really great resource on conditions of ditches. And it'd be really great to use that information to apply our own best management practices. The third area is on stream buffers and wetlands. We have, I'd love to come talk to you guys again in the future on the wetlands mapping program that was done years ago now, but we want to keep pounding that into you guys as like a really great resource to adopt so that you can have a better sense of where wetlands are because the DEC, the state and the federal maps are not sufficient for really protecting wetlands. So we have a local resource that, that could be utilized. So I'll, I'll come again if you guys want me to. And so that's one thing. Then we, I think these, the others are really focusing on municipal training, the facilitating, the discussion on stream buffers and that letter M as well, the, the hosting of training at a specific stream site. And then there are a number of programs that the state puts out, the trees buffer in a bag, the trib, Trees for Tribes program. So we can keep promoting that because I think there's a lot could be done on, in municipalities and on private stream projects. But the problem is you have to kind of keep reminding ourselves and, and property owners that stream buffers don't like keep themselves going all the time. So you have to be proactive about that. And then the fourth area is on collaboration. So there's always, always room for this. I think we, we've been working on doing some more collaborating through the Kewa Lake Watershed Intermunicipal Organization. And then just other groups talking with Owasco Lake and the Kewa County and then Kewa County and Seneca County talking about Kewa Lake. So we want to focus on that. We have some outreach ideas of how to have a almost like a SWIFT 911, but for not so swift items that are needed, you know, not so 911-y, but to focus on the, just information and getting that out there. So Liz Thomas will keep drumming that, keep beating that drum and we'll get there. And if the, depending on the outcome of the Owasco Lake Watershed Rules and Regulations that the state is reviewing right now, I mean, we want to start pushing that as something to implement for the Kewa Lake Watershed as well. And I'll, there is like no place to put systems in this entire presentation, but as 1% of the load, we felt like we had to include it somewhere. And there are a number of programs that do help residents replace septic systems. So we will keep promoting those through the Health Department. So the draft of this was just posted today on the website. You know, it's too long to really look at, but it's, we have a Water Resources page and then there's a plan section within there. We did, I did a really simple form, online form that people can fill out if they have any comments on the plan, or people can just send me comments directly. And I have, I'll just leave that up for a sec. And I have no idea how much time I had or how much time I took. So I'm happy to take questions.
Great. Thank you, Darby. You've got time. So does anybody have questions or comments for Darby? Joel?
Unmute, Joel.
Yes. Darby, you, you've spoken quite a bit through here about the collaboration between Owasco Lake and Kewa Lake. How did that come to be? And what's, and what's, what's the structure of it?
The collaboration? I don't, there's no specific structure other than why, I don't know, Liz, if you want to answer anything with how the Kewa Lake Watershed Intermunicipal Organization has been talking, but just, I mean, they, the Owasco Lake folks have worked a lot in Groton and kind of this tip of Dryden that, so you know, I've just been kind of more through the, my planning department, we talked to them quite a bit on just projects that they're interested in doing. I don't, if I can share the mic with Liz, I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
Um, no, other than that, you know, they're, they have in Kewa County, they, they have allotted quite a bit of staff to the Owasco from, from Kewa County's mostly planning, but also their Health Department and Soil and Water to putting together the, the Owasco Rules and Regulations and, and some of their other watershed wide plans. So they've, they're already, they're already a little bit, I would, I'll say ahead of us here in Kewa Lake. So we're just, they're very, very eager to share their successes with those of us on Kewa Lake. And you know, there's no need to reinvent the wheel. They already have a Watershed Manager, which is another reason why they are making a lot of progress. So because they're so willing to be helpful, we've been, we've been asking them for, for help. And so I hope to keep on building on, on that willingness. Michelle, Michelle Wonderlick from Kewa County Planning is, is just done an amazing amount of outreach and, and help there. So yeah, we're just taking advantage of, of help that we're being offered.
Terrific. It's nice to see that kind of collaboration.
Other questions or comments? Bob?
Yes. A question for Darby on those percentages of phosphorus runoff. Is that a statewide figure? Is that an Owasco Lake figure? Or is that a Kewa Lake figure that you gave us?
Yeah, thanks for the question. That was the, for Kewa Lake. That was specifically out. That was specifically of the lens model that DEC ran for Cugeal Lake in the HABZ Action Plan. I actually noticed that the TMDL that just came out has a slightly different number. I think they have 9% point sources. And so, I mean, picture a little approximation sign in front of those percentages, but it is Cugeal Lake.
You talked about the wind direction and the length of the lake, which would mean that usually the blooms would presumably develop at the southern end of the lake. We've got two sewage plants putting effluent, processed effluent, of course, into the lake there. So, it seems like it's a remarkably low figure, given the fact that this is where the blooms would most likely develop. And you've got two big point sources of discharge.
Yeah, there's, actually, they're pretty small point source, I mean, on the scale of the sources of phosphorus into the lake. It, I think Todd Cowan could spend the next hour talking about the wind direction and then the lakes' sashes. So, the internal wave that happens and why you get things piled up in one under the other. Because really, the north end, it's those still days, so after it's been windy. And then it still is, seems to be the connection that we're seeing more in the north end of Cugeal Lake with the higher talks and blooms.
Is that because there's more agriculture up in the northern end, perhaps?
Perhaps.
Is it shallow up there, Darby? There's a lot of...
It is, yeah. The very north end is very shallow. And they do a lot of, they have their own weed harvesting program that they do because of just how shallow it is. And if they didn't pull out the weeds, you would not be getting boats through it.
Of course, you can get some pretty potent south winds, too, so they can blow to the north. So, that might explain it as well.
Those are the good sailing days, so I've learned.
Linda?
Two comments. One of them was, I was surprised that sewage, that the, what was I going to say? The non-point sources really aren't contributing that much. Both the city plant and the Cugeahites plant treat all of the sewage so that the amount of phosphorus going into the lake from these two sources is quite low and very well regulated. I think that a lot of people focus on them because they're measurable. And so, I think that those aren't the, that's not where we should be looking at problems. The other thing that I saw was, I was surprised that the septic tanks, septic systems around the lake were so low. It was only 1%. I would have thought that that actually is a much bigger problem than 1%. And I'm wondering how they've come, they came up with that number.
There's a lot of modeling and there's a lot of math and modeling that goes into this. I could point you to some of the sources if you're interested in learning more. And I think we, yeah, that when the HABZ Action Plan came out a few years ago, I think we anticipated a higher number. But I think just, I mean, you picture the, you know, these big spring rains, right? That just pull a lot of, I mean, the total phosphorus is also all that phosphorus attached to the sediment. And so, you know, so then there's a different form. So, if you want a whole nother presentation on different forms of phosphorus, we got people who could cover that, too. So, it's, yeah, just think about all that water coming in from our south end streams and compare that to what might be coming out of your, the septic systems along the lake shore. You know, it's kind of just a different volume of water.
That actually brings up another question. I appreciate that the chemistry of phosphorus is quite complex. And I'm wondering what form of phosphorus they're measuring? Because that, you know, if it's not available phosphorus, then it's not really contributing to the HABZ.
Yeah, there's that. And then I think the Total Maximum Daily Load that just came out does a, still trying to figure out how they jump to a few of their conclusions that they do in talking about total phosphorus versus the soluble reactive phosphorus. So, that's the bioavailable phosphorus. And then linking it to chlorophyll A targets. Yeah, we'll figure out a presentation on that sometime.
That would be good. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I see George's hand.
George?
Thank you. Hi, Darby. Do we know, in terms of agriculture, do we know whether certain types of agriculture create more phosphorus than others? For example, crop farmers spreading liquid nitrogen in the spring or animal farmers or fruit farmers?
Right. I'm pretty sure that information is in the TMDL document. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. What I do remember seeing is a table that talks for implementation and best management practices. What practices have the highest total phosphorus loading reduction and also the lowest cost? And the item that comes up at the top is riparian buffers along pastures where there is exclusion fencing. So, if you keep your cows out of the stream and then have a forested buffer, that reduces the most phosphorus and costs the least amount of money. And then that's followed by, I don't know, like grass riparian buffers beside fenced exclusions. So, it's really keeping cows away from the water. But in terms of, yeah, whether it's animals or manure spreading, I don't really have any of those numbers off the top of my head.
But I could look that up.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's your assignment, yeah.
Hey, Darby, I was really, I really liked the ditching management best practices and having, it's great to hear that Rebecca's been so well received in Madison County. So, that's fantastic by the highway department, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, and I, so, we've been thinking about, a lot of our Watershed Committee members attended Rebecca's presentation and were really excited about it and wanting to implement something here, but not knowing exactly what to do. So, we've been talking about it and, you know, I thought, you know, if we, if we just had, you know, it seems like you ought to be able to look at a stretch of ditch and look at the slope and the terrain and say, here's the recipe. And so, you know, that'd be really great if, you know, we could get stuff like that to, and, you know, I would, I think adopting a town policy on ditching practices, that could be constructive. So, I really, I really appreciate that. That's great.
Yeah, I feel like we keep talking about needing to do stuff on ditches. And, you know, I think the training's out there and then it's just a matter of are the right people who are operating the equipment getting the training? And then, but it's, sometimes it's really hard to undo what's been done. So, in some places, I know Cornell Local Roads says you should be filling the ditches back in. So, instead of, they don't need to be three feet deep, they only need to be a foot and a half deep. So, can you fill it in? Can you keep it vegetated? And some of these practices really might mean having places where water goes onto other land before it enters a stream. So, then that gets a little, that goes beyond the right of way. So, that causes some trouble or trying to work with landowners who might not want to have a stormwater detention basin on their properties. So, you know, just trying to think of like, what's the narrowest best management practice to do?
Yeah. So, we also sort of made a connection about that that might be, I don't know, useful. But we hosted Leanne Kanda from Ithaca College to talk to us about the spring salamander migration. And so, they breed in the, they basically breed in retention ponds, right, in temporary pools. So, then we thought, well, if we could promote, you know, homeowners might get excited about a salamander pond more so than a ditch. But we kind of use both of those to move things along, maybe. I don't know.
Right. Yeah, no, that's a great, yeah, let's not call it a ditch, let's call it an amphibian breeding zone. Good idea.
Cool. Any other comments or questions for Darby? Great. Thanks, Darby. Thanks so much. I really, that's an important area, so.
Thanks, yeah. Look forward to sharing more. And definitely, if you have any comments on this, send them in either through the form or the email and appreciate your time.
Great. Like, Darby, okay. Okay, so next up is the marijuana discussion. And Joe's, go ahead, Joe.
Well, as I'm sure most people know, we all have till the end of this year to decide whether we're opting in or out of the marijuana sales in our towns. And I'm just trying to find out what other towns are thinking about it. Are people generally thinking of opting in? Are people thinking of opting out? And just trying to get an idea of what people are like, what people are thinking of. And also, if people have got a better idea of what happens if you opt out. Does the tax money go to the state? Does the tax money get split amongst the other towns? Does it go to the county? How does that work? So, I've got more questions than answers.
Okay, so maybe this, yeah. Does anybody have any information to share? Rod?
No information. Joe, I'm pretty sure the town will stay in. But we haven't had the discussion yet, but I'd be very surprised if the town board chooses to opt out.
Joe, this is Ronnie Hardaway. I attended a presentation about this law. If a municipality opts out, they receive no tax monies. So, that any tax monies that are taken in by the state will not trickle down to the municipality.
Does the state keep them or does it get split among the other municipalities?
It's split among the state, county, and municipalities, very similar to sales tax.
Right, but if Lansing were to opt out, what would happen to Lansing's share? Does the state keep it? Do the other municipalities get it? How does that work?
If Lansing opts out, there should be no share because you have no sales in your municipality.
Oh, so it's only sales in our municipality that we would get a share of? I thought they were pooling things to a certain degree.
Not, not, it wasn't really clear, but I assumed from the discussion that no, that you would only get retail sales based upon local sales or you would only get money from the state based on local sales.
And are we going to be able to regulate where these shops are at? Or is it basically going to be anywhere they want to go?
Your local code would have to indicate where they could be. They're basically a state-regulated retail business and they would follow the, your local code related to any type of retail sales establishments. Or the exception is the in-business smoking establishments, similar to a bar, but for partaking of marijuana, those are slightly different. But it would be, basically, think of them as being regulated by the alcohol, the Bureau of Alcohol, the State Bureau of Alcohol. It's very similar process. It's not completed. So, the state, I think it was NICOM, said that just keep in mind at this point, because it's still kind of a two-year process to get everything in place, it's, a lot of it's TBD. And their model is to say just model it upon bars. And the model is being, the marijuana laws and regulations and enforcement are going to be, or they're attempting to make those very similar to alcohol sales. So, that would kind of give you a mindset about what to expect from the state and how to regulate businesses and receive monies from the state.
That would be good to be able to regulate them like we do bars. So, you could say we don't want them next to the schools, for example, or whatnot. So, we'd have a little bit of control over them. That's good to know, thank you.
The state has some guidelines on that, too.
Okay.
Yours can be more restrictive, but they can't be less restrictive.
And, Dan, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I actually spoke to my class about this because I was fascinated by the tax structure that New York came up with. It's very different in every state. It's kind of a fascinating thing. But New York will put a 14% sales tax on cannabis. 9% stays with the state. 4% goes to municipalities to be split between the county and the sub-municipalities of the county. I believe that's a 25-75 split where the county maintains 25% of that 4% or, you know, 1% of that. So, it's kind of fascinating how this breaks down. I'd be curious, the way I understand it, marijuana will only be sold in dispensaries, correct? Delivered marijuana stores? Or are we going to be seeing these combined with other retail? Does anyone know the answer to that? I believe it's going to be in specific discreet dispensaries. And that's what makes this type of tax a little bit different. They sometimes call it an excise tax because it's going to be sold in state-regulated venues. I would imagine in Dryden, we would be in favor of this. I know one vote, probably two. What do you think, Jason?
Well, definitely two. Probably, I wouldn't be surprised if we have five, so.
The way it would work, it's an opt-out. So, if you do nothing, you're in. Is that right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, how do the taxes get split between towns and villages?
It's not specified. I don't know. You'd have to look at, probably following. It wouldn't necessarily be the current structure. I know that because we have, we have an existing sales tax structure, but this is a new type.
Linda?
I was just going to say, we discussed it briefly at our board meeting last night and I'm pretty sure Cugeahites will opt in. I think most municipalities will unless there's very strong opposition just because of the financial aspects of it.
It could be an economic driver.
So, Bob?
What's the timetable for an opt-out measure? And has it got to be in the form of a local law that would require a public hearing?
You have till the end of this year to opt out. If you opt, and that's the only time period you'll ever be able to opt out. If you opt out, you will be able to opt back in at a future time. But after the end of this year, you will lose the ability to opt out.
I believe the deadline is December 24th.
And I see that Rod Howt chatted me that he thinks the New York, the Association of Towns did a program on this and that it's posted at their website possibly, right? Is that right?
NICOM also has the presentation that I attended and it should be available on their website also.
Great. Good, okay. Anything else?
Just one last thing. So, the projection is $350 million a year in taxes coming from the sales tax. So, I haven't broken that down to what that means per municipality, but you know, that's a, that's a lot of money. It could, you know, could add up for us.
That's great. Thank you all.
Marijuana dispensary in your town, right?
Yeah. Okay.
You might already have one and not know about it.
Well, I think they've got to be licensed, I presume.
Yes.
You might have an unlicensed one right now.
Great, okay. Thanks, everybody. It's a good discussion, so.
One thing that wasn't mentioned, and we didn't, to talk about the dispensaries because of the legalization, the other side of this is the production and processing and how that might, how that might impact the municipalities. Because we have some experience because of the hemp processing that's gone on in the past in the county. But I know that those who were into the hemp production for CBD are looking for an alternative since the CBD market has gotten completely saturated and a lot of people were left sort of hanging with, having made investments in auction facilities and processing. And I expect that they'll be trying to pivot into the marijuana market in order to, you know, make a return on their investments. And that might have implications for us as municipalities in terms of the... And that might have implications for us as as municipalities in terms of the um land use and also um. I don't think it'll have any implications for sales tax because they get in, I'm talking about selling stuff in county. But um it has, it does have, you know, other impacts. It could be a source of of income for those who are involved and 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 there's there's some significant labor involved in producing these products, so it could be an employment source. You know, and just another aspect of it is not just the sales of the of the of the, you know, the the grown product.
Yeah. Great, thanks, Joel. All right. I think we should move on um to the next item of business. And uh so we'll we'll go to the committee reports and start with uh the new broadband committee. And uh Nick was gonna report to us on that, so go ahead, Nick.
Thanks, Mark. Um, yeah, I I see several familiar faces here, so this won't all be news to uh all of you, but uh. Uh, for those of you who are uh were not on our our broadband committee, uh we had our initial meeting here on Tuesday. And uh that was led uh primarily by our consultant that we're working with at the county uh at Fujitsu. Blake Stovall was uh presenting this and he introduced uh the members of the team that will be uh leading that study on his end. And allowed them some uh time to describe the various elements of the study. The real, you know, overall goal of the study here is looking at uh reaching uh our underserved uh. Uh populations and households in the county and then uh making sure that uh we have a, we can come up with a plan to provide broadband to those those areas. So the um on Tuesday, we talked through some of the central assumptions of the study and looking at uh what uh we were, how we were defining underserved. And uh the geography of the study area, uh which uh in some cases, for some elements of the study, does actually extend beyond uh the county bound- boundaries. Uh, and uh discuss, you know, there's a lot of good discussion, I'll say, uh in the in this, you know, we have some really well-informed members in the committee. Who uh had questions about how we are defining uh things like reliability and uh access. So really got into into some very uh uh technical issues very early on, so it was encouraging that we have such a uh well-involved and educated group on the on the call. Uh, and uh we went through sort of in the, you know, point by point through the various study components that we'll be looking at. Uh, and those, there are four sort of key deliverables. A market assessment, uh design, operations and maintenance, and a financial se- financial analysis. So we kind of went into very uh fine detail on what uh is going to be involved in each of those components. So where we're at right now in the study is uh sort of the beginning data collection. Uh, so I've been working with uh our um consultant here and determining what pieces of data they have and what we need. And uh starting to locate those those pieces that are needed. Uh, the timeline for the study we're looking at is a hundred and twenty days roughly from from kickoff. Uh, so uh, you know, call that uh roughly uh four months. So here we, I'd say, you know, by the end of the summer, we're we're looking at having a having a final product. You know, I will say at the at the end of the meeting, we had a lengthy discussion about um how we're um handling some of the information in the study that's uh more sensitive. One of the key issues that we're uh dealing with with broadband is that ultimately what we're coming up with here is. Is a research that could be useful to a a variety of different uh private sector uh players in the in the broadband market. And uh should it be, you know, widely publicized, then it would be uh potentially useful to to somebody who would have a. Goal that's not exactly in line with what the county's goal is on this study. Uh, and it could potentially have, you know, adverse consequences for the overall effort we're trying to trying to achieve here. Uh, so we're trying to figure out how to how to balance the concerns of privacy of of the of the data that we're working with uh versus the uh public access and and public disclosure. So those conversations are still ongoing, trying to trying to sort out how we're gonna how we're gonna negotiate that. And uh accommodate the the sort of competing goals there. So I'm happy to answer any questions folks have.
Great, thank you, Nick. I'll open it up for for discussion or questions. Wow.
Okay, some crickets.
I'll ask a question of uh of Nick, and that is a hundred twenty days for the study, which I understand. What might be the timetable for actually, I'll say bricks and mortar, but actually cable strong in the air? To actually get broadband through this system to people's homes?
That's a good question. Um, the biggest variable in my view is probably funding and and, you know, we're going to be paying close attention to federal. Uh, uh efforts that, you know, we we were recently announced relating to infrastructure and there's, you know. Lots of zeros behind broadband in that uh initial package, so we'll be looking at that closely and seeing if that advances. And if not, then we'll be having to look at other other funding sources. I think it's probably a number of, um, it's definitely more than um twenty twenty-one. I can say that for for, you know, pretty high confidence. Uh, but beyond that, I have to I'd have to um talk with our consultants a little bit more and uh get a better idea of 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 timeline for rollout.
I presume one to several years, right?
That's fair.
I think George had a question and Ronnie has one, so.
Thank you. Um, am I unmuted?
It looks like it.
Okay, it, um, are there portions of the city or businesses in the city that would benefit from better broadband?
That's a great question. Um, yeah. It probably depends on on what kind of work they're doing and what their their um needs are. For the purpose of this study, you know, our definition of underserved is a hundred megs symmetrical, which means you can up download something at a hundred megabytes. And you can also upload it at a hundred megabytes per second and um. And lots of places that have, you know, access to um spectrum uh right now will hit that download side pretty quickly, if it's my understanding. The upload side is is a different question. Um, and particularly for businesses that deal with, you know, lots of data, if they're, you know, editing videos or, you know. Uh, producing video games, things like that. They may, they may need that upload capacity to be even higher than what we're looking at. So those are maybe a little more specialized or ditch applications, but um they are important, I think, for economic development. It's maybe a part of a bigger conversation where we want to pull in, you know, other other partners to to have that conversation.
Thank you.
Yeah, great. Ronnie?
I I think I think the key to George is if you know of areas that are underserved, to feed that information into Nick so that it doesn't get missed. Because right now is data collection of who's underserved. And if you've got, you know, pockets where you know people are not getting uh cable uh strung to their houses, definitely feed that to Nick.
Well, I got rid of the cable, so I guess I'm underserved.
Ronnie, did you have a question or a comment?
No, no.
Okay, sorry. Yeah. Anyone else? So uh Joel?
Uh, Nick, I I heard secondhand that the the quality of the data uh being acquired is is um was a cause of concern. Uh, could you address that?
Yeah, certainly. It's one of our um, one of our biggest uh, not just us, it's a it's a nationwide issue is that. The um maps that the FCC uh currently has for broadband are um known to be questionable, we'll we'll say. And Congress has even instructed the FCC to update these maps and then bring them up to a higher higher standard, and we understand that process is still ongoing. So uh, you know, kind of the 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 best way to think of it, if you if you understand census geography a bit, you know, the the units they define. I believe uh the block level, uh, you know, typically contain, you know, between two and, you know, several, a dozen or so house addresses. Um, and the way the FCC maps are currently uh measuring broadband is that if even one of those houses has access to. A service, whether that's, you know, uh, uh, a service like Spectrum or or whatever, then that entire block is considered served. Um, and while that might be a legitimate way to look at it in a pretty dense urban area. Uh, as soon as you get into, you know, more suburban or even rural areas, it it becomes uh less uh useful as a as a mapping approach. Uh, so there there's a, that's the concern and, you know, Fujitsu is well aware of it. Uh, we have, you know, we're talking through the the various approaches we have to to look through how to how to address that. So it's it's a known known problem with the with the um mapping availability.
And it is being addressed in that in the by Fujitsu and in in their data collection.
Yeah, yeah, they're looking into it. There's um, you know, some different, they, I have to go back through my uh typed up notes to to see what uh. They had uh suggested as some of the alternate approaches.
Yeah, good, thanks.
Rod?
Uh, Nick, so I know we had, I think most municipalities had identified someone to be on the committee. Did you get pretty good representation of at the meeting?
Yeah, we did. Uh, we had a, it was a, I don't have the exact head count, but pretty good turnout. Uh, most, most people uh were there, and I'll say, uh, Rich from the town of Ithaca was there, so.
Great. And I I uh, I uh, the point you made about the direct aid come to municipalities. Um, and, you know, that that might be useful in moving this forward once the study is done, I think, you know, that's that's great. I don't know if if uh individual municipalities might want to consider um using their their funds to support this as well, so. Great.
All right.
Great, thanks. Next sounds like a a good meeting, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good afternoon.
Likewise. All right, I'll um report on the emergency planning and preparedness. That uh Rorden and Dan and Justin Van and I have been working on with um Brad Pinsky as well, helping us out. And, you know, we are now um recommending um that municipalities. Reach out for individual discussions with their um fire and emergency services. To just have an engaged discussion about what kind of support they feel they need and where they're going to be. In five or ten years, what their what their planning strategy is for leadership changes. Um, and so just sort of addressing um that as as a conversation to figure out what kind of support they see that they're going to need. Um, and I would um, I have done this uh for our fire departments in Caroline. And Justin uh joined me for those conversations and that that was really helpful. So um, you know, I'm I'm recommending that um. That's the next step for um each of us to consider. Um, and to do that in um collaboration with with Justin, who can really has a good knowledge of of uh what's going on in that area. And um, I will say that I, you know, I um, I had, we had really good conversations with our our three um fire departments. So it's really helpful. So what what I expect to do going forward is then um. Have a, we have a meeting with all three of the the agencies in our town and um and compare thoughts that way. Um, and there were some, you know, you know, we we felt like the conversations were really um frank and constructive, so. Um, I think getting everybody together after this um will will be um also constructive and. We're hoping will lead to um concrete measures we can take to to help, so. So, yeah, any any questions about that? So um, if you, I I know the situation is different in every town as far as, you know, what their fire districts and um. So, but um it it is um. I I found it really useful and and uh do reach out to Justin at the Department of Emergency Response for uh assistance with this. He's very willing and willing to help, so. That's my report. So with that, I'll move on for uh report from uh Rod from the Energy Subcommittee.
So I'm pleased to report that a proposal was submitted to the Park Foundation in late March entitled Community Choice Aggregation in Tompkins County. Developing a Path Forward. Uh, I think we requested seventy-two thousand dollars. The budget, I think, was around a hundred and forty thousand, but we requested seventy-two thousand. Sustainable Tompkins is the one who submitted the grant proposal, but they worked in close communication with. Representatives from the towns that signed on to the proposal. So the those that signed on were the City of Ithaca, the towns of Caroline, Danby, Dryden, Enfield, Ithaca, Newfield, and Ulysses, and the village of Trumansburg. Uh, and we certainly noted that this was supported by TCOG. If this is funded, we'll be developing an MOU uh between TCOG and Sustainable Tompkins. Because they're, they would be the one hiring this program manager uh to do a lot of the work. Um, one of the stated goals uh obviously is to move forward in a way that. Aggregates benefits for all the involved municipalities and alleviates the pressure of each municipality to figure this out on our own. But we also want to outline a path for moving, starting with CCA two-point-O and moving to three-point-O. Which would mean keeping revenue more local and helping to develop some renewable energy product projects here in the county. Terry Carroll, Kareem Beers, and Gay Nicholson were very involved in actually writing the grant proposal, but then we would come back. And reps from the municipalities that were signing on gave input and feedback, so I think it was a pretty good process that we used. We don't really have a backup plan if it's not funded to figure out how to move forward, so keep your fingers crossed that it will be funded. Uh, because it, uh, and I, you know, I'm hopeful that it will. We had had some communication with Park Foundation. We know they were supportive. But I think we'll hear in early May, uh, whether it's funded or not. So that's the report uh from the Energy Committee.
Hey, thanks, Rod. I'll open it up for any questions for Rod. Rod, the the goal for, if if this person's hired, what would their goal be for the for two thousand twenty-one?
Yeah, so it's both to start, we, everyone was interested in, okay, let's not just focus on three-point-O, let's get started on the two-point-O. Uh, and so there would be an educational component for the constituents in the municipalities that are involved. Uh, because it's an opt-out process, um, you know, residents can choose not to be involved, so there there would be a pretty heavy educational component. But we also want the person to, hopefully, we'll hire somebody who's pretty up to speed on the three-point-O. Uh, and we did put money in to hire a consultant to help with the three-point-O aspect. Uh, to think about developing local renewable projects. Uh, so there would be, you know, we we'd interview some of the folks who already do this, you know, it's possible that. We could work with one of the existing providers, uh, but my guess is we might not be able to. So that there's a number of things that are going to have to be examined for getting from that two-point-O to three-point-O. Uh, but it is also to get us started on two-point-O uh and moving forward.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Rod? Okay, let's move on to to transportation. Bob?
Yes, I wish I could have seen the rollout this morning of those electric buses, but Mark, you did, and I'm going to defer to you right now.
Oh, thanks, Bob. Um, that that'd be great and that'll um, I'll just uh. Sneak my transit services report in here because that was really what it was about. So I did attend. Uh, they have, they, today they broke out four of the seven um electric buses and um. Leslyn spoke at the event, um, and Anna Callis was there, um, and it. It was very celebratory and cold and snowy, but um people braved the weather and um it was very exciting, so. Yeah, the Proterra, all electric buses are out there. We're one of eleven municipalities in the state. Um, Anna reported that's that's done there. Um, Anna reported that's, that's done this and it was a, a really great way to celebrate Earth Day, so.
Mark, have they got the charging stations set up yet? Because that was a problem that they talked about, uh, several months ago when they first put the order in. Is it all set so they can charge those buses up at the TCAT garage?
I, I think that's true, Bob, but I, I'm not sure. I sent Matt Yarrow, uh, email a little while ago for details about that, um, but yeah, I, I'm not sure the, the NIPA representatives were there and they spoke, they were working on, on that kind of, um, infrastructure build out, so, but yeah.
That was the little infrastructure wrinkle that they talked about. It's okay to get the bus, but you've got to have a way to charge it and I hope they've done that.
Yeah. Good. I'll see what I can find out.
Thank you. That's it.
Great. Okay. Uh, Water Quality Subcommittee, George.
Thank you. Um, we had a meeting last month. It was a very good meeting. The WRC, the Water Resources Council will be getting out the Hydrilla handout that they developed last fall to area, um, boat landings and, and boat businesses and parks around the lake. The Keegan Lake Watershed Intermunicipal Organization, or the IO for short, has a really, um, uh, big agenda for this year. Um, this is a great organization. I'm, I'm really impressed with them. Uh, there's 50 municipalities around the lake. Um, who could be members. There's only 24 who are dues paying members and I think one of the big challenges will be to get more municipalities involved and raise, uh, more money within the organization because one of the goals is to hire a, um, watershed manager for the Keegan Lake Watershed. And right now we're sharing Seneca Lakes, uh, watershed manager part-time, but, uh, it would really be beneficial to have enough money to hire a Keegan Lake watershed manager. There's different ideas about how to, um, decide which municipalities pay how much money. Obviously some municipalities are much bigger than others. Some have, uh, a much greater, um, watershed into the lake than others do. So that's all being worked on. Um, there's a number of projects that may be eligible for grant funding that the IO is, uh, prioritizing, uh, to see which ones they feel are the most important. I'm going to stop right there. Uh, I will add something that we didn't talk about last month because it just happened a while ago and there was, that is that there's some serious damage done to the wastewater treatment facility in uh, Ithaca. Um, one of the, uh, I can't remember if it's a condenser or what it is, but it got clogged up and, uh, and the, the gas sealed top blew off and got warped and it's going to cost a ton to repair, like a million dollars. And there's two industrial blowers that also need to be repaired. So the facility is working now, but it's, it's kind of duct taped together and, uh, we're vulnerable to, uh, serious issues. So, um, there's that. That's all I've got to report.
Okay. Thanks, George. Any, any comments or questions for George? Great. Okay.
I, I just want to add that Darby's report came out of that committee as well.
Oh, yes, yes.
For that to happen, so that's part of it.
Yeah, we're, we're really fortunate to have, uh, Darby and, uh, and Liz and all the people that work on these things.
Yep. Great, thank you. I agree. Um, okay, great. Um, I guess, um, Rorden, do you want to introduce your topic?
Yeah, not really a topic so much. Thanks, Mark. It's really just a question. I was actually kind of hoping that, uh, Leslyn was going to stick around. Probably could have just gone to her. Um, but the question really is, I've be, I've become very, um, I think we're all very impressed with how, uh, Jason, you know, has handled particularly the last year, but, um, his tenure as county administrator, I think, for me anyway, from, from the village's perspective, has been, uh, one of the better tenures that I can recall from any county administrator with respect to engagement with the other municipalities, um, particularly highlighted over the last year, but I can't remember any time in the last 15 to 20 years where a county administrator was as engaged with all of the rest of us. And that's really not a criticism of prior administrators. That's just the way things were done. Uh, but I've come to really, really appreciate the way that, um, the way that Jason has, has run that office and, and certainly the staff that he's put together around him reflect that. So the question is really one, I suppose, for Leslyn and for the legislature is, would there be any room for their search committee, whatever that ends up looking like, to include members of this body of TCOG? From the perspective of searching for the next administrator and kind of what the other municipalities in Tompkins County might look for from that position. Um, and I realize, you know, hiring becomes territorial very quickly and it's certainly the legislature's call who, who they want in that position, but uh, it's just a question that came to mind this morning when everyone was, was rightfully so thanking Jason for his time. I just wonder, uh, when, whenever someone is that good at their job and, and, and we all see it, it always makes me nervous who their, who their successor is going to be and what their style will be like. So that was a thought I had and whether anyone, again, just a question, whether anyone in this group thought it was worth even, uh, even floating that question to the, to the ledge.
Okay. Thanks, Rorden. Open it up for a discussion. I, yeah.
I, I guess another question is, is there somebody from this committee who would be willing to be that person, uh, to serve?
Like from the village of Trumansburg maybe, or I don't know.
I, I, that thought did cross my mind.
Bob, did you have a comment?
Just that I would support that of having a representative from TCOG to be part of the, uh, search process. I don't know how the county is going to handle it in terms of whether they're going to accept applications first and then winnow it down to the top three, which is what they did when Jason was selected. Uh, and then after that, have various groups interview the, the top three candidates. I really don't know. I presume that it's kind of a work in progress. I suppose that the county legislature has got to mull it over themselves and determine how they're going to uh, seek out the new administrator. It sounds like we're going to have kind of a long timeframe here. That there'll be an interim chosen, you know, to, to fill in after Jason leaves at the end of May. But then it may take, uh, a good portion of the remainder of the year to make the selection. It might even spill over into 2022 for all we know. So I think there's a timeframe, but certainly would be wise for TCOG to move to, uh, ask that one of its members or multiple members be involved in any kind of a search process the county might initiate.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's a fine idea and I can't imagine it wouldn't be embraced, so.
I, I think it's really important to get in at the ground floor because that's when you start describing the job, you know, you put the job description together, see how you want to tweak it. And, and that's where Rorden's ideas really need to get incorporated is who are we looking for? What are the qualifications we're looking for? So that when we get that pile of resumes, we have people who actually fit that bill.
Well, should someone from TCOG put a request in, in writing to, um, Leslyn perhaps, uh, that, uh, we request, uh, uh, TCOG participation in the process?
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to do that, so. Yep. I'll let her know that, what we, the thoughts we traded and, um, and just ask her about it, so.
Do you want a formal, uh, vote of, uh, from us requesting it?
Sure, that might be appropriate. So offer resolution, um, from TCOG, uh, requesting, um, uh, or, yeah, requesting participation, uh, representation on the search committee for the new county administrator.
I think, I think it should include some of the language that Rorden said about how, uh, it's been really great to have Jason being engaged with the various, uh, municipalities and how we want to be engaged back in, you know, the next person who's chosen because we found that relationship so valuable.
It sounds like, like two whereas's to me.
Sure, that's, that's fine. So, um,
I second that.
Yeah, I can, by, so, yeah, you know, so whereas, uh, TCOG, uh, whatever the paraphrasing of what you just said, Joe, um, found, uh, you know, engagement uh, by the county administration valuable, uh, to its members. Um, we, um, ex, you know, resolved, we, we express, uh, we, we feel that, um, engagement of TCOG in some way on the search committee, um, would, um, facilitate, enhance the search process. I mean, at this point, I think it's just basically having a discussion with Leslyn and, 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 and going from there. So I don't know how formal we need to be about it, but I think, I think an endorsement of the general idea from, from us is, is good.
Yeah, and if we, if we as a group and, you know, make a request, I mean, it, it could always go to the legislature if it needs to.
My suggestion is that we include the job description because if we wait to the point where they start reviewing the applications, we've missed part of the step of getting in there, what we want. We want somebody that's outgoing, that's going to deal with the other municipalities and cooperate and help the villages and towns, et cetera. And that needs to be in the description of the job. So I, I would say we want to include that, not just recruiting where you look at the applications and interview them.
Yeah, I agree. I think, I think that's what other people were saying. Is that right? Um, is that?
Yeah, heard different, Joe.
We agreed on that. So I, I, my own feeling is that we would, you know, the legislature would draft the, the job description and then, and then we could, we could provide feedback on that. Is that what you're? Is that a thought, Mike, or anybody?
I would just, I would, yeah, I would just add, Mark, I mean, I'd love to be able to have input at the job description, but, um, the job description of county administrators prescribed by New York State Civil Service. I don't know if the ledge is planning to rewrite that. That's, that, that would, that would certainly be a lift. That would be interesting if they were going to do that. But, but maybe, you know, maybe it's just as simple as this group authorizing you as chair to formally request, um, via a letter or email, formally request of the Chair of the Legislature, uh, the opportunity to participate in their search for the next county administrator. If, if she says yes, then, then really, then whoever that representative is or representatives are, um, would then be able to, um, speak for all of, all of these desires.
Great. I like that. Kathy?
I do too. I think that's a great suggestion and I would recommend that that maybe be forwarded to me, um, Monday and then I could, uh, make sure Leslyn receives it.
Great. Thank you.
Sooner the better.
Okay.
Kathy, should it go to the Chair of the, uh, Personnel Committee as well, or just to, uh, the Chair of the Legislature?
Just the Chair of the Legislature.
Right.
Thank you, Kathy.
Sure.
Great, so, um, so we'll, we'll, I'll call for a vote of the, of this resolution as, as stated by Rorden. That work, that, you know?
Yeah, well, I'll just, I'll, I'll just, then I'll just formally move, Mark. I'll move that we do authorize you as Chair of TCOG to submit a letter to, um, the Chair of the County Legislature requesting TCOG representation on the search committee for the new Tompkins County Administrator.
Thanks. Do I have a second on that?
I do.
Seconded by Jason, I believe.
I think, uh, I think it'd be good to put those couple whereas's in there too, though. Just, just pointing out how, how, uh, how beneficial it has been to us to have had this relationship with Jason and, and how it'd be nice to participate in the process of choosing successor because of, in light of that.
Well, I, how, how about if I include that in the letter, having been authorized to write the letter? Instead of putting it in the resolution. So, does that work? I think we all recognize that. I, I get it. So I'll, I'll include that in the letter and, and, uh, go from there. Right? Is that good, Joel?
Yep, it works.
Great.
May, may, maybe we want to do a second resolution, just thanking Jason for all his work, uh, so formally thank him as a group as well. And that will serve both purposes. So after this, let's do a separate one on that.
I think that's a great idea. I, I had wondered about that as well. So, um, on the current resolution, I'll call for a vote if there's no further discussion.
Just a clarification, um, I think I seconded what was initially your, um, motion, which is going withdrawn, I presume in favor of, of Rorden's.
It, it was. I don't know. Okay.
For the record.
Okay, whatever. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great, thank you.
So, so I'll move that we, uh, set, we, we, we recognize the, uh, great relationship that we've had with Jason over the years and really appreciate the, the work he's done with us and we'll miss him. Or something to that effect. I think those are the kind of the key elements that I'd like in it.
Okay. I'll, I'll second that. Any further comments? Is that sufficient? Um, I think, you know.
When is our next TCOG meeting?
Uh, it'll be in June.
June 24th.
Yeah.
Do we need to vote?
Yes.
We, we, we do. Is everyone comfortable voting on that? That's funny. So, okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great, okay. All right, we're at 4:30. Um, Caitlin wanted to have a, a discussion. I, I see she's still here, thank goodness, um, on the video conferencing issue for, um, public meetings. Um, go ahead, Caitlin.
Hi, um, I'm, as I'm sure all of you have found, um, we've discovered that, that video conferencing can work really well. We've had members who've had to be out of the area who can't quite get to meetings on time and such like that. Um, and, um, Ulysses has installed, uh, video equipment. Um, so that when we are able to resume meeting in person, we can still provide the service to our, our public. Um, but what we found is that with the open meetings law, um, that, um, in order for members to participate, when the executive order allowing for Zoom meetings is lifted, um, that you have to, if they want to participate via Zoom, um, that or other kind of, you know, uh, video conferencing systems, that you have to publish the address, um, in advance. It has to be publicly accessible to, to the public. Um, and that, that just, we were wondering if, um, TCOG was interested in, um, working together to lobby the state to consider changing the law because it, it seems that we've all been thrown in, into this wonderful scientific experiment in, in accessibility. Um, and that, that perhaps this law is, is no longer applicable, um, or needs to be tweaked, uh, to meet, uh, current, uh, current needs post pandemic. to meet current, current needs post pandemic.
Joel?
This is something I approached Anna Callis about months ago because the, because I had exactly the same concern. And I said, you know, what, what is the legislature doing about this? What's going to happen when the governor's order no longer obtains? And the response was, oh gee, we hadn't thought about that. So I hope they're thinking about it now and I think it would be very helpful for us to, you know, give a little bit of push to the process here and getting rid of think about it because it has indeed been very helpful both to, not just to facilitate participation by the public, but also to, you know, we've had people missing board meetings in the past because, you know, they're vacationing in New Mexico or something. And somehow, you know, publishing their location in New Mexico so that the public there might participate in a meeting doesn't seem like a very useful condition to be having as part of your, you know, options for enabling participation remotely. So thank you for pointing out that aspect of it, which I wasn't aware of until this morning when it was mentioned on the call with Jason. I think it would be appropriate for us to, to express concern and, and, and urge the legislature to facilitate participation in my video conference going forward, not just by the public, but even by board members.
I, I agree. I, I think it makes a lot of sense. And it seems like it would just be a simple change to the open meetings law.
Well, the counterargument that I've heard is that when I'm sitting in this room, which none of you know where it actually is, what you also don't know is who might be standing off camera over here trying to influence me. So you can't see what kind of pressure I might be having from some outside influence. And the idea of publishing the addresses so that you can come and watch me be in the meeting and see the full surround sound as opposed to this little narrow window that you get to see. Though I, I do agree that it has made it much easier to attend different meetings and it's also made it for the public much easier to attend the meetings. I know we're seeing a lot more people are watching our meetings online than ever attended in person. And we certainly intend on continuing that. We've got a screen on the wall so that we can, you know, have people participate where the whole room can see them. We've got cameras so that we can video the meetings live. But that's, that's the pushback I've heard is you can't see who might be influencing me off screen here, who might be doing hand gestures and stuff and putting pressure.
Bob?
I will tell you that going around Enfield of recent weeks, the most common thing I hear about meetings is when are we going to be back meeting in public? I want to see the councilperson's body language and I also want to see who they might be communicating with either in person or electronically during the course of a meeting. And while we in Enfield, for example, are going to stream our meetings, we've invested in infrastructure to do that. So when we go back to meeting in our town hall, we can have the meetings available to people to see. The constituents still say, I'd like to come to a fixed location, for example, for a public hearing and talk to the board and be in that room and see everything that's going on.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that that shouldn't be the case. Well, and I mean, maybe it should even be limited to, to, you know, a, some subset of a quorum that attends remotely. But, but it would be awfully nice if you didn't have to, you know, have to work at mustering a quorum because somebody's vacationing in Cancun, you know. It's been, it's been great during the pandemic to have somebody who was trapped in New Zealand because he couldn't get a flight out, still be able to come to a planning board meeting because it was a Zoom meeting, you know.
Well, I, I just think that, you know, I, I, be the, the flexibility of having dual, we are also setting up our town hall in the same way that Enfield and Ulysses have done. And, you know, I, I think this isn't going to be the last pandemic and, you know, and going forward from here, the endpoint is that, you know, the different people have different vulnerabilities, health situations. I mean, I think having it so that some people, if they don't feel safe meeting in public, can meet remotely is, is, is just so great. And I've heard that before, you know, I think that's, I've heard that for a long time about, you know, you need to have someone present there so you can tell that no one's got a gun up to their head. But I, I, you know, I just find that so, you know, fanciful almost that, that that would be a reality or a real threat to our, our process. So I, I see the advantages of freeing this up so that, that we could have dual in-person, remote meetings as, as a huge advantage that I, I would like to see going forward. Rorden?
I would just say that I, I also am a fan of in-person meetings. It was, it was a nice break for the last 15 months, but I'm also looking forward to getting back to in-person meetings. I am glad that I don't have to drive to Ithaca for every consortium and TCOG meeting, however. So I think the flexibility is, is important and at the very least, you know, I'm sure all of you know, if you're like me and you, and you find yourself searching through state law and one thing or another, there's so much of New York state law that is still living in the 19th century. And this would be, this would be one of those things where there has to be a balance between 19th century concerns and 21st century technology and that balance just doesn't exist right now. So, you know, whether it's, whatever that compromise is, you know, whether it's, there has to be an in-person quorum for the meeting to be held. But that members not in attendance can participate via, you know, whatever the, that, that, whatever that happy medium is, I'm sure there is one and it's not what's codified in the law right now. So I, I think any effort to get, well, any effort to get Albany to do anything is always monumental, but getting Albany to, to move on this would be very helpful going forward. And to your point, Mark, even, even post COVID, whatever post COVID looks like, I think, I think the sentiment has changed for a lot of people about their own health and about the health of others around them. So if you're not feeling well, stay home, please. And yes, you can still attend the meeting, you know, that kind of thing. So I would certainly support some things to encourage some change in this, in this area.
This is Ronnie. Another thing to consider, it's very hard.
Sorry, we got two meetings going on.
It's very hard for two, for young families to participate in meetings and participate in government because they have to hire childcare to come in and participate in a meeting. We're really trying hard in the village to get a new generation of people involved in the, in the village government for succession planning, to sustain the government through future generations. And young couples have a really hard time coming to the meetings and participating if they have children. So that's, it's another reason to have various methods of people to participate in the meetings and hybrid with in-person and, and then video conference for those who cannot be there in person.
Mark, I just want to make sure I understand the issue because I think many of us are planning on doing hybrid meetings where the public can participate through Zoom. I think the issue is if a board member has to participate offsite, we don't want to have to be able to give their address.
Correct, that's exactly it.
Right.
That's the tweak we're looking for exactly.
Yeah, and/or if that board member is on vacation, you can give their address all they want, but if the public is not able to get there, then can they vote? Really is the question.
Yeah.
I, I think the key to making this work is having a quorum attend the in-person meeting. So you may have one or two people who are attending remotely, in which case you can't fix a vote completely by, you know, dealing with someone out there, but it allows a board member who's sick, who's out of town, who, who has some issue to still attend the board meeting, but not have to actually be there. And so I think if we, if we ask for it to be changed so that as long as there's a quorum at the public presentation, other members can show up remotely, you know, via Zoom or some similar, you know, visual audio system, then I think that would be a balance that would work for both the public seeing the process happening and allowing for a little bit of flexibility.
Those sounds like a good compromise.
And for those of us in rural areas, oftentimes it's not sickness, but inability to get there and travel in the middle of a snowstorm.
Correct.
We may have trouble with the quorum under those issues.
Yeah, well, some people are closer to the town hall than others, but, you know.
So, any other comments on this topic? So, so I, you know, Caitlin, would, would you, how do, how would you like to proceed with this?
Well, I've been attending TCOG meetings for now an hour and 42 minutes, so I'm certainly an expert on how you do your process. So I would defer to, to the rest of TCOG. Perhaps maybe you could send a letter or an email to, to Anna and see about if we can get this process going as our chair. But I think that it would be great and I, and I like the, the ideas that were generated here. I think the quorum makes really good sense, the in-person quorum. And that's what we've been talking about at Ulysses. We're not trying to circumnavigate, you know, anything, but we found it useful.
Public process, yeah.
If you want to put some, if you want to try to put, put a little more, put some teeth behind it. I mean, we could, we could create a resolution. I'd be happy to work on it with Caitlin. We could draft a resolution for TCOG to adopt, to pass along to the ledge, to ask them to adopt as well, to formally request a change in, what is it, Section 103 of Public Officers' Law, you know, with suggested language. If TCOG plus the legislature gets a resolution like that to Anna as well as Senator Omar and anyone else we can think of, you know, maybe by 2025, it'll sneak its way into a bill that will adjust that.
Great. So that's great, Rorden. So let's do, we'll make that a next meeting agenda item. Does that sound good? And thank you for that suggestion and stepping up. I think that's a great idea.
Well, how about we formalize that? That the group charges Rorden and.
Well, I guess, yeah, I, I mean, I, we can do that if we want. Or Rorden and Caitlin can just introduce the resolution at the next meeting.
That'll be easy enough.
Okay.
I want to step back to a previous thing. If we're not meeting in two months, should we pick somebody who we would present as a representative on the search committee for the new county administrator? Because that committee is probably going to get going between now and our next meeting.
Good point.
Yeah, that, I guess, I, I feel awkward doing it before, you know, having the conversation via letter with Lesland. But if, I mean, we, we could pass, you know, we could say. What's that, Joel?
You don't have to tell her.
Do we have any volunteers who would like to be in that position so we could informally say, oh, this person will do it? And then we ratify it at our next meeting?
Yeah. And Rorden, your name has been mentioned.
I mean, I, I would certainly be willing to. I think, honestly, I think the Chair of TCOG makes some sense to be on that committee. But if, if, if Lesland says, sure, bring two, or she says, sure, bring one, and Mark says, I'm definitely not doing it. I mean, someone should, so if no one else wants to, I'm certainly willing to.
Yeah.
I had no idea how soon the, that the process will begin because I think the first thing will be an interim administrator. And the way that the release was stated yesterday, it's going to be later on in 2021 that they are going to initiate the search. So I don't think that it's going to happen overnight.
I don't either. Yeah. Thanks, Bob.
So I, I mean, I think, I, I actually, I agree with that. I think if Jason leaves May 31, interim starts June 1, I, I sort of doubt that the search committee is going to start June 2. If we do have to scramble, we could always decide by email and ratify it at our meeting in June.
Yeah, I think that's good and I'm, I'm happy to step up in that role as Chair too, so. Great. Next, so we have one next meeting agenda item, the video conferencing resolution. Thank you. Anything else for the next meeting? I think we might hear from the code officers. I think that's the plan at the next meeting. And we'll have the committee reports, updates, other, other items or ideas?
Mark, probably wouldn't we, wouldn't we want to put on the agenda the, whatever it's now being called, the, the federal assistance program, just assuming that by that time there'll be more clarification about it.
A discussion of that, Tim?
Yeah.
It's a great idea. Yep. That guidance from the Treasury is just sort of coming out now. So, yeah, I think, I, thank you. Yep. Any other ideas? Great. Well, we're 18 minutes over. I'm gonna offer a motion to adjourn. Unless anybody has something else.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Joe, so I think, I guess we're good to go. All in favor? I, great. Okay. Thanks, everybody.